Order the Monroe Public Schools Board of Education meeting today is February 27th, 2024. The time is 7:00 PM. Could we have roll call, please? Jamie?
Yes, Dr. Behrens.
Good to see everyone.
Mrs. Myers.
Here.
Mr. Ben Waschanova.
Here.
Mrs. Vincent.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Here. Could we stand for the pledge, please?
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's see. We don't have any revisions, do we?
No, no revisions or changes.
Okay. Before we begin, as a reminder, I'd like to let everyone know if you want to address the board in public commentary, the forms are right back there on that table. If you could fill that out and hand them to Jamie, that would be good. Mr. Shaw, are there any additions or deletions on our agenda for this evening?
We have none.
Can I get a motion? Jamie, could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Dr. Behrens.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Ben Waschanova.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes, and the motion passes. That brings us to Superintendent Comments, Mr. Shaw.
Wonderful. Well, thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. I appreciate it, and I can tell you that our two elementaries that are here to present are thrilled to see so many high school students here to support them. And we are, and I can tell you that I know two kids for certain that are smiling ear to ear inside right now as their heart is about ready to leap out of their chest. So the first ones up tonight, though, are Mrs. Bell and Custer. So if you guys want to go ahead and step up, microphone is a portable mic, so please pick it up and speak into it so everyone that's online can hear you. So we have been able, we're able to get back to having our student board of delegates present, and so we're thrilled to have Custer and Raisenville with us tonight. So, Mrs. Bell, it's all yours.
All right. Thank you, Board, for having us this evening. We were supposed to share with you earlier in the school year, and due to some sicknesses and things with our two board of delegate representatives, we had to reschedule, so we appreciate you squeezing us in this evening. We are really proud of the progress that we've made in one of our goal areas, and that's what we chose to show to you this evening. So we are going to go ahead and begin our presentation. It's all about "You Belong Here." That's definitely been our motto at Custer in improving our Custer family engagement. So we're going to share that information with you this evening.
My name is Jacob Kruger. I am the sixth grade delegate at Custer Elementary. The delegate that is next to me is Connor. He is the fifth grade delegate. And then, as you know, we have Miss Bell and Miss Lake.
So number one is increasing family engagement. And what we mean by that is we want to increase, like, our things that we have every month. We have families come in and, at the end of the day, and we have families do these fun activities with other students. Like, we had a Lego night, and we just want to increase more of it and have more of them.
One opportunity that you have, that parents have that we can, it's helpful for, like, parents coming in is, it's an opportunity for families to bond together. Families, they can meet your friends that you hang out with at school. Families can also just come together in general.
More of them are families can learn more about the school, to show our pride, and to get feedback about what we are learning.
So in open house every year, I'm nice and loud, but I'll use this anyway. At open house every year, that's definitely an opportunity for families to come in, be able to come into the building, see where their kids are going for encores, classrooms. Families will stop and chat with other families. We have had great attendance the last couple of years with our open house. It definitely sets the tone for the school year. But Mrs. Lake and I and our board of delegates this year have worked really hard to make sure we had a full calendar every month through the school year of things to do to get families into the building. We know that's really important. Our kids enjoy it. Our staff enjoys it. Mrs. Lake and I spend a lot of time planning these things, so we definitely enjoy it as well. And so we just wanted to showcase some of the highlights from each month this year. We have some data we'll share with you at the end on how much our family engagement has already risen from last school year.
So as Mrs. Bell mentioned, we did plan a variety of activities throughout the school year. Most of them were at a minimal cost for our parents or free for families to attend. We did start our school year out with a Kalahari Family Weekend. That was so well-attended that they actually allowed us some extra nights for additional families to be able to come and do that. One of the most popular events we find for families and students is the roller skating party. After COVID, it was just one of those things that kind of got families back out and doing some things. So we have such great attendance that we do usually schedule two of those, one for our lower L and one for our upper L. We do that two times a year.
Another event that we did is we had imagination stations come to our school, and they did a bunch of stations. So a bunch of families came and they had fun with their kids, running around the gym, doing a bunch of events. They had, see, I went to it and see what they, I don't quite remember what they had. They had some, like, microscopes out, and you'd put, like, rocks on the room, and you could see all the minerals in the rocks. And then they had some science experiments.
Another one was, we also had another skating party for the third and sixth, third through sixth graders because we had to split them up in two groups because it also would be too crazy. Another one we had was trunk or treat, and there was a very long line for it. There was, like, so many families that came. And, yeah.
So the Turkey Trot is an event that we've done for a very long time. Actually, Ward Olsen was one that first started the Turkey Trot at Custer. So we resurrected it a few years back, and this is a Saturday event that families can come.
Barnhart actually donated turkeys for this event, and so we gave out some fun prizes, like the fastest finisher, the final finisher, the best dressed family. So just a fun family event, free for our families, and some families went home with a turkey.
We've also been doing some family reading bingo. We did family bingo, and...
Why don't you tell them what the prizes were?
Is this the reading one? The prize for this bingo was you got to take home a free book. There are some good, very good books up there.
Another one that we did was a barn owl painting night, and some, all the families that wanted to participate in it went to the barn owl, and we got to pick what paintings we wanted to do, and it was just a very fun night. Also, we have had the family Lego night, and it was part of our December events. We had a December to Remember Spirit Days, Five Below fundraiser, a December PTO meeting, and a family Lego night, which I have already said. And that was fun. We have also had a family bowling night. It was while the Lions were playing, so half of the time I didn't even watch. I wasn't even bowling. I was just watching the game, pretty much. Yeah, but that was fun.
So February this month, we've had two family events early in the month. We had our Me and My Guy Dance. That was attended by 300 of our Custer people. That's a big event at our school. Lots of fun, as well as we just had our first family movie night. We had about 80 people come Fri-, this past Friday night, watched a movie together in our gym. They brought their camp chairs, blankets, pillows. We had a little concession stand open. Families were able to bring their own food and things with them in if they wanted to. It was a pretty fun time, so that's something we'll definitely do again. So March is next, and it's reading month.
So in March, at my, at our school, we do something, we do the book fair. And there's one night where you can come with your families and get, shop for books. And then we do something also called goodies with grandparents, where you get to bring your grandparents to the school and then shop with books with them.
Grandparents love buying books.
In April, we are also doing Jenny E. I have done Jenny before. It is really fun. The judges basically gets to come around and ask you about your product, why you think your product is important, and what made, what inspired you to make your product?
I personally have not had a Jenny here at Custer, but I have had one at Waterloo. And I couldn't say that they are very fun, and I am very creative some, most of the time, and just good at making stuff.
So one of the new events that we've added to our school for the spring is a family game night. So again, just another fun, free event for our families to come out, to work with other families. And we've bought Giant Yard Games and Uno and Connect Four. Just a fun night out for families to get together and hopefully enjoy some fresh air outside.
So we're pretty excited about this, knowing this was one of our big goals, you know, with having a student population as large as Custer. It was really important to us to get more families in the building. We incorporate our curriculum into as many nights as we can, but we like a variety. So that, you know, if you're a family that's not comfortable necessarily coming on those kinds of nights, then maybe we can get you in on a night where it's just a Lego night. It's just a game night, right? And then we can talk to you, and maybe you'll come to one of the other events that we really want you to come to to learn more about our curriculum and things that are happening in the building. So we're happy to share that at this point in time, during the whole entire school year last year, we had 705 families come total to our events. For this school year already, and we're in February, we've had 870. Some of those families have come to more than one event, so they're, you know, have some multiple entries in there, but we are hoping to hit over 1,000. That's our goal by the end of the school year. So we're really proud of that.
So the next one is future ideas. We are looking for ways, new ways for the families to connect here at Custer. And one of the ideas that I have made up is a family dinner night is some, some, one time is a family would, families would come in and they would eat dinner at the school and just get to know some of your friends and get to talk to people that you, that you know, and maybe people that they know, so.
Sure. We just want to thank you for your time. We're really proud of these two kids. We're really proud of the work that's gone into all of these events at our school. We're moving in the right direction and getting people into our building to see the good things that are happening. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. So no, great big thank you. Boys, you did a phenomenal job, as always, and Mrs. Lake and Mrs. Bell, thank you for putting this together and striving to get to 1,000 families into your building this year with all these activities. So for Custer Elementary, great job this year, as always. So one more hand for these guys. High school kids, thank you for standing back there and smiling as the elementary students presented. And we have next up, where'd he go? Where's Mr. Hoppert? Oh, there he is. Couldn't see him there. All right, so we have Raisenville up next. Mr. Hoppert.
Good evening, everybody. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Scott Hoppert and the principal of Raisenville School. We're excited to be here tonight to talk to you about our school. With me is Kelly Davis, our school improvement coach, Enoch Adepetu, the, one of our delegates, sixth grade delegate, Ava Jones, who's also a sixth grader, and Gabby Vasquez, who's our fifth grade delegate. When we sat down to think about what we wanted to present to the board, we decided that we wanted to share with you a metaphor. And the metaphor is really the underpinning of our entire school culture and what we are all about at Raisenville School. And that is the marigold, as you can see in our T-shirts. It all starts with the marigold effect.
Many experienced gardeners follow a concept called companion planting, placing certain vegetables and plants near try to improve growth for one and both plants. For example, rose grows more like planting garlic near the roses because it repels bugs and prevents fungal diseases. Among companion plants, the marigold is one of the best. It protects a wide variety of plants from pests and harmful weeds. If you plant a marigold beside most or any garden vegetable, that vegetable will grow big and strong, healthy, protected and encouraged by its marigold.
Marigolds exist in our school as well as encouraging, supporting, and nurturing growing students and teachers alike. If you can find at least one marigold in our school and stay close to it, to them, you will grow, find more than one, and you will positively thrive.
Few will be lucky enough to be planted close to a marigold. Being assigned to one as a mentor, teacher, or team leader will be rare. You will have to seek them out. You can identify them by the way they congratulate you on arrival, rather than asking why anyone would go to the school, or by the way their offer is to help sounds sincere, or just by how you feel when you're with them. Are you calm, or hopeful, excited to get started, comfortable asking questions, even the stupid ones? If you feel good around this person, chances are they have some marigold qualities.
So marigolds are found everywhere at Raisenville School. It's all based on this article that I shared with our staff years ago, and Mrs. Vincent probably remembers this. Find your marigold. It's from a website called The Cult of Pedagogy. The kids are going to share with you a copy of that article. It's really basically for new teachers, and it's a way for new teachers to find, if you guys can just pass on this. New teachers to find, people to, to support them and help them grow. And then we just, we extended that metaphor to our, to our school community. We find, we find marigolds everywhere at Raisenville, from our PBIS reward system, the marigold badge, to our compliment box, where students routinely leave compliments for one another and for staff members, to bulletin boards, actually, Mrs. Davis made this bulletin board, to desk decorations, to Initiatives for Kindness Week, for reminders for teachers of the four-to-one ratio of praise to criticism. They're everywhere at Raisenville School. And so we decided, as part of our presentation, that we would send our crack team of man-on-the-street interviewers out to the halls of Raisenville School to ask people, what does it mean, what does being a marigold mean to you?
What does being a marigold mean to you?
Being nice and being likeable.
Thank you. What does being a marigold mean to you?
Being kind and respectful to others and paying enough effort. And...
And being all kind. Thank you. What does being a marigold mean to you?
Being a marigold means that you help others regulate their emotions and show up to school ready to run.
Thank you.
What does being a marigold mean to you?
To me, being a marigold means to be kind, respectful, and responsible, and basically just being a good human being.
Thank you.
What does being a marigold mean to you?
To me, it means that whenever I get a marigold, it means that I have done something good. For example, like when marigolds help plants to be protected and help them grow. That's what I do. What I do is to speak for.
Thank you.
What does being a marigold mean to you?
I think being a marigold means that whenever you come into the room, you make sure that you leave the room a little bit more feliz, a little bit happier than you left it.
Thank you. What does being a marigold mean to you?
To be a marigold means you're a good helper, a good friend to others, and very responsible. I feel good to get marigolds.
Thank you. What does being a marigold mean to you?
I think being a marigold means going out of your way to make someone's day, being kind to all the people around you. So, yeah.
Thank you.
What does being a marigold mean to you in line?
Marigolds make others feel good about themselves. They help others who have problems. And if they are feeling down, they can try putting a smile on their face.
Thank you.
What does being a marigold mean to you?
Being a marigold to me means that you give other people your strength when maybe they don't have any. Marigolds, if you don't know this, marigolds are good companion plants, so they're planted by other plants to help them grow and thrive. So just be a good person, lifting each other up and helping others.
Thank you.
What does being a marigold mean to you? It, it means always helping out a friend when they're feeling down, and always helping when they feel down. That's what being a marigold means, basically.
Thank you.
What does being a marigold mean to you?
Marigold means to me that I am helping others to be the best that they can be. Like a marigold in a garden protects the plants. I feel like I'm protecting all my students. I'm protecting my colleagues, protecting the, the reputation of this school, and helping everyone to be the best that they can be.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What does being a marigold mean to you?
I think being a marigold is being kind and helping others. Let's be a good friend and being nice.
Thank you.
Action.
What does being a marigold mean to you?
Being a marigold to me means that we are here for each other. We take care of each other. And at Raisenville, we do everything we can to make sure everybody is happy and safe.
Thank you.
What does being a marigold mean to you?
Being kind and being respectful.
Thank you. What does being a marigold mean to you?
Being a marigold means to me that you're always positive and you're always looking out for your friends.
Thank you.
What does being a marigold mean to you?
Being a marigold means that you're compassionate to other people, even if you don't know them, and anticipating their needs, basically knowing what they need at that moment.
Thank you. What does being a marigold mean to you?
Being a marigold means being the kindest person you can be, looking out for other road runners when you can, treating people nicely. As, well, as we like to say in our class, be curious about other people, not judgmental. Okay? That was the famous Ted Lasso said there, if you know who Ted Lasso is. Do you know Ted Lasso, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. You stole it from Walt Whitney. But it's a very good, it's a very good philosophy to have, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
What does being a marigold mean to you? I think being a marigold is helping people around you because that's what people do when they do use a garden. They plant marigolds to help others thrive. So I think that's what being a marigold means. What does being a marigold mean to you?
As somebody who encourages and builds others up, so when they're down, they look out for them, and they help them to be the best person they can be.
Thank you. You're welcome. What does being a marigold mean to you?
What does being a marigold mean to me? Being a marigold to me means that you care about other people, that you lift other people up, that you're a support to your friends when they need you the most, that you're there for your people. That's what being a marigold means. That's why around the Raisenville School, everyone's a marigold. Everyone supports one another. Everyone, everyone lifts one another up. Everybody offers a helping hand whenever somebody needs it. That's what being a marigold means to me.
Thank you.
So the funny thi- The funny thing is the, the microphone is totally a prop. Like, it was totally, like, the kids, it's dead, you know, and they're, and the other kids are leaning in to talk to the, to the fake microphone. So, which is kind of funny. Okay, the, the gang would also like to share with you what being a marigold means to them.
It means to be kind to other people and just to do what you're supposed to do.
I think being a marigold means to be, to do something extraordinarily kind and lift other people up.
Being a marigold for me is like bringing people up, like not being mean to them, being kind to everyone, putting aside their differences, and just being friends with them.
So every month at Raisenville, we have something called Raisenville Roundup. We get all the kids in the gym together, and we, we celebrate what, what is there to be celebrated, and we share what's there to be shared. And we talk a lot about this idea of picking each other up and being there for one another. And I routinely ask the kids at every single roundup, I say, "Look around you. Look at your friends, the people sitting near you. Look at the adults in the room, sitting around the edge of the room. You know they're all here for you. They're all here to lift you up. They're all here to support you, and whatever it is you need, and whatever it is you need to be, these are your people." And then I ask them every single time, because it always makes me want to know, who's got it better than us? We practiced this, too. Okay, thank you very much. The kids, the kids also have for you a marigold. And on the marigold, there's a little thing about the marigold effect, so you can, you can take that away. so you can, you can take that away with you. We just appreciate the opportunity to present to the board this whole, uh, this whole philosophy, this whole mindset, the whole marigold thing has really taken off at Raisinville. It's, it really is who we are, and really is what we do. And we're excited to share it with you, and we appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Wonderful job, Raisinville. Thank you so very much. I have learned a lot about marigolds tonight that I did not know. And, uh, but I do appreciate, um, Mr. Hopper, your sentiment, what you're doing out at Raisinville, and, uh, and the concept around being a marigold. So, thank you very much. And so, one more round of applause for those kids from Raisinville. Wonderful. So, to our Raisinville crew, you're more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, or you can just step on out. Picture will be taken, and you can go home. But that concludes, uh, my first portion.
Okay, so that brings us to public commentary. Board agenda items only. I will turn it over to you.
Hi, everybody. Um, I am the parliamentarian for the board public comment, uh, portion of the program. During this time, anybody that has filled out a sheet, your name will be called to come up and to speak at the podium. I'm going to ask that you use the microphone, because you can't hear online if you're not using the microphone. Everybody will be allocated three minutes. And during those three minutes, we want to hear your concerns, we want to hear your comments. We ask that you be respectful and understand that during this time, we, we are here to listen. We want to hear what you have to say, and we want to hear, um, all that there is to hear. So, we will not be responding to your comments at this time, but know that your responses are important to us, and your comments are important to us, and we will hear back from you, get back to you. Um, in addition to that, I have these nifty little signs that I will hold up to kind of help keep you on track as to how we go. So, I have a one minute, I have a 30 second, and then I have a time expired. So, okay? We will call first Thomas Corveth. And if I say your name wrong, I'm so sorry. Hi, it's, uh, Thomas Carvath. Um, I'm sure you've heard of my father, Rick Carvath. He's been coming to these meetings for a couple of years about, a couple of years now, about the same subject. Uh, I'm here in support of renovating the pool. Uh, actually, I was here, I want to say about a year and a half ago, to talk about the same subject, um, in that it hasn't been done in 24 years, 23 years, something like that. And we have a whole bunch of people here tonight who are, uh, also supporting it as well. Uh, it needs to get done. Uh, we have an entire generation of students who really could benefit from being able to dive into a pool and be competitive at home. Just a quick example, we have had, uh, other schools come to Monroe to compete, that they make fun of us in the stands. It's a little embarrassing, we're a Division One school, and you cannot dive in here. So, all the times don't matter, no one wants to come compete. So, we have students that have to drive hours away to be seen by their parents, if they come at all. And unfortunately, that's just how it's been for over 20 years. So, but thank you for considering it tonight. I know it's the first step of, uh, at least three. And, um, I would encourage you to keep an open mind about how much this is going to cost and what this will mean for future students for generations, not just the money right now. And I'll give the rest of the time, because I'm sure a lot of people want to talk. So, thank you. Thank you so much. Next, we have, um, Evie Murphy. You can just start when you're ready.
Good evening. Um, we are here, so I am here. I am, uh, Monroe Public Schools' parent. I'm mother to Alex back there. He's a swimmer, second season that he's participating. It has meant a lot to our family to have him participate, coming from his school. We, we were a trying family. Um, and so, getting to know new people and being in a safe environment where he could, you know, expand the skills that he has. As Mr. Carvath mentioned, um, I'm new to this, so I really didn't know what to expect. But being at home in the, both teams, both the girls and the boys teams, because they do support each other. So, this is not, you know, one team that you're supporting. You're really supporting Trojans in the mission, that they're trying to compete at a Division One level. And these students are practicing two hours or more every day. And I feel like, as a community, we need to come together to support providing them the equitable equipment that they deserve to have as a Division One school, so that they're competing on the same field as their peers. Thank you.
Thank you. And Alex Werner.
Good evening. My name is Alex Werner. I'm a sophomore at Monroe High School. Uh, this is my second year on Monroe Swim Team. Swimming for Monroe is important to me, because it's made me stronger, allowed me to connect with the school, and make connections with the coaches and my friends. As a team, we have to go to a lot of swim meets whose teams have pools with diving blocks, professional timing equipment, and proper ventilation. It's quite a change when we look at our own pool and equipment. This is an issue that needs to be addressed if we want to continue improving our team. As you know, we don't have starting blocks for our main pool, because it's not safe for us to do so. We practice two hours a day, but that can only get us so far without being able to train the other way schools train. Instead, we have to start races in the water, and this slows us down. A new pool with starting blocks would allow us to make our team faster and stronger. Please help us show Trojan pride by supporting our school and team. Thank you.
Thank you, as coming as well. That concludes the public commentary at this time.
All right, that brings us down to, let's see, board discussion and action items on our consent agenda. Are there any items that board members would like to be moved off of the consent agenda item and move to new business? All right, hearing none, can I get a motion?
I would then move that items B to A through B to C be considered there.
Support?
Support.
Jamie, could we have a roll call, please?
Dr. Behrens?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachanova?
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes, and the motion passes. That takes us down to... Yeah, I'm going right here. That takes us down to, Mrs. Flynn, do we have any new hires here tonight?
We certainly do. All three of our new hires are here. I would like to ask Tamla Moore, Kyle Reed, and Isabella Hutchison to-
Absolutely. So, I am going to be the new Monroe Middle School Athletic Director. I will also be teaching two classes of weightlifting at the high school in the morning as well, uh, doing that. I've brought my wife over here, Jennifer, who's a first-grade teacher at Custer. And my daughter Sophia is here tonight, who is a fifth-grade student at Custer. My other daughter's at the varsity basketball game, watching them tonight. So, thank you very much, I'm excited for this opportunity. Okay?
Congratulations, sir. I've never met this guy before, but congrats.
Hi, my name's Tamla Moore. I am an administrative assistant to the directors of Student Services. Yes, I did. My oldest, oh, sorry. I'm the youngest, so I'd be the oldest anyway. My sister Nancy Slowsher.
I'm Isabella Hutchison. I'm going to be working as a social worker at the high school, and I brought my dad, Jason, with me tonight.
And you're alumni up here, correct?
I am, yes.
You got to mention that.
I am an alumni of Monroe High School.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yeah, yeah, so is that B two, is it called?
All right, for clarifications, I guess when we did our consent agenda item, it should have been B one through B two C?
B one C.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, B one A through B two C.
I'm sorry, I forgot to press my button. I will also amend my motion to sort of reflect that correction, then.
Now, do we have to vote on it again, or no?
I think we probably should second that again.
All right, can I get a second? Jamie, could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Dr. Behrens?
Yes.
Mrs. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachanova?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and the motion passes. That brings us to new business. Uh, let's see. Before I turn this over to Mr. Shaw, I would like to provide some background and context to our agenda items. All items on our agenda have either been discussed in depth at a prior work session, and/or have been addressed in our weekly board briefs. So, although it might seem that we move quickly through these items, we want our public to know that we have thoroughly done our due diligence and review prior to this meeting tonight. Also, as a reminder, our work sessions are open to the public. Uh, let's see, then I'll pass this on to you, Mr. Shaw.
Okay. So, Pool Engineer Contract. So, it is a recommendation, uh, that the Board of Education move forward with Councilman Huntsaker on Monroe Public Schools for Phase One Consulting of the renovation of the pool, swimming pool, at Monroe High School, as rented, it costs not to exceed $20,000. This will be funded from the general fund. This is Phase One, and so I'm going to bring complete clarity to this. It's Phase One. By, uh, the board approving this contract, though, is they're also saying that if the, uh, Phase Two comes back with all the information, and the board is able to, uh, fund the program, that this company would also then do the drawings for that next phase. The other point that is here, uh, is that this will take approximately eight weeks. When the board, when the, uh, results are completed, a communication will go out to everybody, saying, "Come to the, uh, special workshop, where the presentation will be made, and what all the options are." We've asked this engineer to bring back all sorts of options, uh, so that the pool can be competitive, and by addressing then any kind of concerns that may be inside the pool room itself. From there, the board will, will not make a decision that night, because they will have just received that information. That's why, you're correct, it will take approximately three more times, right here, to figure out that next step. But Phase One is to approve hiring Councilman Huntsaker, at a cost not to exceed $20,000, so we can find out exactly what it's going to take to make the pool competitive again.
Is there a motion?
Um, I move to start Phase One for the renovation of the swimming pool at Monroe High School, not to exceed $20,000.
Support?
Support.
Any discussion? Hearing none, could we have a roll call, please, Jamie?
Yes, Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachanova?
Yes.
Mrs. Myers?
Yes.
Dr. Behrens?
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman?
Yes, and the motion passes. That brings us to budget amendment.
Thank you, President Zimmerman. Tonight, we are asking the board to move to adopt the amended 2023-2024 budget for the general fund as presented.
Is there a motion? Support? Any discussion? Hearing none?
Oh, I was just going to say, thank you, Ms. Shook, for all of your presentation earlier tonight at your, at the board work session.
Can we have a roll call, please, Jamie?
Yes, Dr. Behrens?
Yes.
Mrs. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachanova?
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman?
Yes, and the motion carries. That brings us to reinstatement. Mr. Melonopsi.
Thank you, Mr. President. We ask the board to consider the recommendation of the committee to approve the conditional reinstatement of student A, and move to accept the recommendation of the committee for conditional reinstatement, or move to reject the recommendation of the committee and fully reinstate student A, or move to reject the recommendation of the committee and deny reinstatement of student A.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion. I move that we consider the recommendation of the committee to approve the conditional reinstatement of student A.
Is there support?
Support.
Any discussion? Hearing none, could we have a roll call, please, Jamie?
Yes, Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachanova?
Yes.
Mrs. Myers?
Yes.
Dr. Behrens?
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman?
Yes, and the motion passes. Uh, that brings us to reinstatement B.
Thank you, Mr. President. We ask the board to consider the recommendation of the committee to approve the full reinstatement of student B, and move to accept the recommendation of the committee for full reinstatement, or move to reject the recommendation of the committee and conditionally reinstate student B, or move to reject the recommendation of the committee and deny reinstatement of student B.
Is there a motion?
I will move to follow, follow the recommendation of the committee and reinstate.
Support?
Support.
Any discussion? Hearing none, could we have a roll call, please, Jamie?
Yes, Dr. Behrens?
Yes.
Mrs. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachanova?
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams? Mr. Zimmerman?
Yes, and the motion passes. As we have no old business this evening, I will turn it over to Mr. Shaw for superintendent comments.
Well, thank you very much. Um, so, our Student Board of Delegate, Delegates met today, and, um, has been designated, and so, I want to share that Public Schools Week and the Student Board of Delegates, uh, from February 26th to March 20th, March 1st, has been designated Public Schools Week, celebrating our nation's public schools. And so, uh, we're asking our Student Board of Delegates to always go out there and support. But I also want to share that our Student Board of Delegates met today, and as a culmination activity about, uh, our kindness challenge. And, um, it was a beautiful day, because this was the first time all of our Board of Delegates was actually, uh, came together. And, uh, we're now, single one was sick or couldn't make it. And, uh, these ladies and gentlemen did a great job in supporting the, our kindness challenge. Uh, we also had great support out there in the community, uh, from billboards and marquees. And so, a huge thank you to our community, community partners for that. Winter athletic teams, uh, the winter sports season is drawing to a close. Uh, senior nights and, uh, tournaments are all in, heading into effect right now. I know for a fact, boys' basketball is happening right now. And our swim team, our boys' swim and dive team, qualified three students at the prelims for the SEC finals, SEC finals. Uh, J.C. Hay, Alec Adams, and, um, uh, Josh Riggs. Trojans also qualified 10 relays for the finals. Monroe's team finished seventh, had a lot of career best. The bowling team, uh, varsity boys' team, uh, for winning Southeast Conference Division One, uh, red division. Members included Aiden Newton, uh, Booker Ship, Shype, I'm sorry, Cameron Cadell, Evan Eagle, Kayden Stumper, LJ Robertson, and Trevon, Trevor Mann. Congratulations to Evan Eagle, who is a Division One state qualifier. Last item I have, and this is for our pool people, is in our weekend review this weekend, we'll have an update
Congratulations to Evan Eagle, who is a Division One state qualifier. Last item I have, and this is for our pool people, is in our weekend review this weekend, we'll have an update as far as the phases that the pool will be going through, so that the community will understand that the board just approved the Phase One, and that when the, those results come in, then communications will go out, so everyone will know that it's not just a workshop, but it's to review the results from the engineer of the pool, and so everyone can be invited to that event there. So, that's all I have tonight, sir.
That brings us to public commentary. Any topic?
I just want to remind everybody, and if you weren't in here, that we are happy that you're here. We must be respectful and understand, my button is hard to hold, that we're here to listen, and we want to hear your concerns, and someone will respond to you a little bit later, soon. With that being said, it's three minutes, and we're going to start with Owen Langford.
Hi, I'm in fourth grade, and I go to Custer Elementary School. And I feel threatened by a kid in my class. He, he has threw a shoe at the back of my head, told me to go to hell, and lots of other stuff. I, I don't feel safe in my school.
Do you have anything else you'd like...
No, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming, Owen. Raquel Langford? Do you want to, do you want me to put someone in between?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Misty Woolfill? I think I said that wrong. I'm sorry.
My 10-year-old daughter is a fourth grader at Custer Elementary, and she's scared to go to school every day, and has been since the second day of school, since a boy has threatened her to kill her entire class. The same child has continued to have violent episodes, emotional and behavioral outbursts, and has regularly threatened the class. She has nightmares every night. She's in counseling two to three, two to, every two to three weeks, to help her deal with this. It's hard for her to focus and learn when these fits are occurring. The stress causes her to picket her nails and her fingers until they bleed. She's not sleeping well. She deserves a safe learning environment. She shouldn't have to go to school worrying whether she's going to get threatened, whether he's going to throw something at her, whether he's going to bring a weapon to school. I know that he has issues. She knows he has issues. We've taught her that you shouldn't look at children differently, but she shouldn't have to worry about whether he's going to kill her. I shouldn't have to take her out of her class, where she loves her teacher, where she loves her friends. She shouldn't have to worry about that. She shouldn't have to worry about this every single day. We've contacted everybody that we can think of to get a solution. Everybody. We've emailed, I've had meetings. I don't know what else to do. What else are we supposed to do? She doesn't want to homeschool. She doesn't want to go to another school. We've been in Monroe Public Schools. My oldest is 25. You were the principal.
Thank you for coming. Raquel Langford?
My name's Raquel Langford. I'm a mother of a fourth grade student who attends Custer. I'm sorry, please bear with me, because I'm very emotional. But I am upset with the situation that is going on in my son's classroom. He has been threatened by a student, and he has been told that he is going, I'm sorry, the student has told my son that he has, is going to kill him and bring a gun to school. This happened last Thursday. But the threats have started from the beginning of the school. He has physically been assaulted. The child took off his shoe, shoes, and threw them, hitting my son in the back of the head. And then he told my son he should go kill himself. I've tried, and I have contacted a lot of people, through the administration and the district, including a couple that are on this board. So he is verbally abused, physically abused, and threatened. He used to love going to school. He used to look forward to learning, and there has changed so much. He does not love school anymore. I'm not sure what needs to happen in order for a change. I fear of what needs, that's going to happen before something gets done. And there is other students too, obviously. So, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming in.
All right, that brings us to board member commentary. Do we have any tonight?
The only thing I would say is that I would reflect on what Darla said earlier, is that I think before we actually employ the people, we should probably approve them, then let them work for us, instead of the opposite way around.
I didn't hear anything.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just think we should, as a system, first approve the hiring of that person, then allow that person to be employed, as opposed to employing the person, and then coming to the board, hoping that they would get approved. I don't think that's what the legislature intended when they said the board has to hire the employees. I think there was a reason they did that. I just would like us to kind of follow that, because I think, obviously, that's the will of the people through their legislature.
One of the things that will happen if we were to make that a practice is, we're going to struggle keeping classroom teachers, and because at that point in time, by the time we bring in another board meeting, there'll be a time when we don't have classroom teachers in there to support staff and others. And so, it has been a practice that we do this in this manner right there, so that we can keep the system moving. And so, if we need to change board policy in that manner, then I think we should be looking at board policy changes.
Don't talk to the board, talk to the legislature. They're the one that tells us what to do and why to do it. I mean, if we can't, I mean, if we can't foresee a teacher being hired, I mean, we have substitutes that we always use. I mean, and there's nothing says we can't have a special meeting if we need it. I mean, you know, I'm willing to come, we come to a lot of special meetings. I think legislature says, do something. That's the law of the land. I think we should do it. That's all I'm saying.
I just want to say, we're always so thankful when there's a room full of people, and tonight there was a variety of reasons why people were here. But I know for me sitting here and all of us sitting here, like, your voices matter to us. What you have to say matters to us. You know, what you think about any of these topics really matter to us, and I just want to say, we appreciate that. And even though half the room left, share that with others, that we do care.
I do want to take on the, the issue of bullet directly. I want you to know that you have a board that cares very much. I know it's been, being addressed, and you have a superintendent that I have no doubt will look into it as well. It's, it's a serious issue, and we do take it very seriously.
And I would echo that, Scott. I think that's something that we, we're not all aware of, so that's something that hopefully we can remedy for you.
All right, then that brings us, that concludes our agenda for this evening. Our next regular board of education meeting will be held on Tuesday, March 12th, 2024, and will begin at 7:00 PM. A board workshop will be held prior to the board meeting, that begins at 5:30. Can I get a motion for an adjournment?
So moved.
Is there support? Show of hands? All right.